We're gonna get started. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to introduce myself. My name is Wendy Marshall. I'm your town clerk. I would like you all to rise for the school committee and council elect. Please remain standing for the presentation of the colors by the Middletown Police and Fire Department as color guards, the singing of the National Anthem by the Middletown High School chorus, the pledge, and the invocation by Reverend Father Thomas O'Neill. Please join me in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the best hope, liberty, and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation by Reverend Father Thomas O'Neill.
My friends, I ask that we begin with a few moments of silence. Gracious God, as we gather here to install all who have been called and chosen by the citizens of Middletown to serve in positions of trust, we ask you, Lord, that in these very complex and challenging times, they may be given the humility to serve as Jesus did, to listen and to learn from one another with a glad heart as they strive to understand, weigh, and act upon the needs and concerns of the people of Middletown. Gracious God, grant them the faith, hope, and love required of them in the works that they are and will be doing. In this, we ask through Christ our Lord.
Please be seated. The next order of business is the certification from the board of candidates. To the Middletown Town Clerk, at the meeting of the Council of the Town of Middletown, held on November 21st, 2022. After a season of reviewing and calculated returns from the respective voting machines, absentee provisional write-in and manual town ballots used at the general election on November 8th, 2022 of the town council for two years, the school committee for a four-year term will hereby certify following true list of candidates elected from the Town of Middletown. Town Council, nonpartisan, two-year term. Peter D. Coniston, Senior, 3,414. Thomas P. Walsh III, 3,288. Emily Ann Tester, 3,165. Paul M. Rogers, 3,106. Christopher M. Logan, 2,894. And Teresa Santos, 2,820. Dennis B. Toronto, 2,813. School Committee, nonpartisan, four-year term. Wendy E. Heaney, 2,984. Teresa M. Soderus-Spain, 2,876. Gregory M. Kill, 2,702. Middletown Board of Candidates, Lucie Anne Gill, Thomas Cheer, Armella M. Murphy, number, AY C Rose Lemon. Now I'd like to introduce the Honorable Governor Daniel McKee, who will administer the oath of office to the school committee.
Thank you. Thank you so much. It's really a pleasure to be in here. Can I just say maybe sixty seconds here? Why it's so important that I think it's to be here indulges me. But the activity that happens on the local level, and our senators and our reps know that one of the first things I did as governor was put a flag very proudly displayed in the rotunda of the State House. And as I walked by that flag, I said, "Those are the people sent here to do a job." And on the local level, not only our reps and senators, but also our council and our school committees, are tasked with just as important a duty in our democracy. And I'm reminded of a line that was, a poet, Gloria, stated when I was sworn in back in March of 2021. And what the poem was, "I love democracy." And I asked her to kind of make it upbeat, even though we were coming out of the COVID. And she did. And one of the lines in there was all towards a more perfect imperfection. And that's what we work for every single day. And the work that is done, both on the school committee levels locally and our council levels, do just that. So I'm honored to be here tonight to give the oath of office to our school committee first, right? Is that what the plan is?
Sure. Does the school committee would like to come forward?
Yes. As a former mayor, I've done this a few times. So hopefully I hit it right. I've been a little rusty. I can't remember if there's nothing there. But I'll just say aye, and then you state your name, and then I'll repeat a few words at a time, and you repeat after me. But if you can raise your right hand, please. And when I say aye, I repeat your name. I do solemnly swear that I will be true and faithful unto the Town of Middletown and support the charter and the ordinances thereof unto the State of Rhode Island and support the laws and the Constitution thereof and the Constitution of the United States. And I will well and truly execute the office of school committee for the term for which I have been elected or until another be engaged in my place or until I am legally discharged therefrom. So help me God. Congratulations.
The Honorable Governor Daniel McKee will now administer the oath of office to the town council.
Great. And it's a pleasure to be here again, and thank you so much. Are you gonna stand in place, or you've got enough room to stand, or you're gonna? Okay. I will do the same routine, and I'll say aye, repeat your name, and then I'll repeat after me in a couple words, and then you're on to business. I do solemnly swear that I will be true and faithful unto the Town of Middletown and support the charter and ordinances thereof unto the State of Rhode Island and support the laws and the Constitution thereof and the Constitution of the United States. And I will well and truly execute the office of town council for the term for which I have been elected or until another be engaged in my place or until I am legally discharged therefrom. So help me God. Congratulations.
The next order of business is the election of the town council president. I would like to entertain nominations.
Mr. Marshall, I'd like to nominate Paul M. Rogers as councilor president.
Are there any other nominations? There being no further nominations, motion to close nominations is in order.
I move to close nominations.
It has been moved and seconded to close nominations. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. A nomination for Paul M. Rogers is currently being nominated.
Motion to appoint Paul M. Rogers as president.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do you, Paul M. Rogers, solemnly swear that you will be truly faithful unto the Town of Middletown and support the charter and ordinances thereof unto the State of Rhode Island and support the laws and Constitution thereof and the Constitution of the United States? And you will well and truly execute the office of town council president for the term for which you have been appointed unto another be engaged in your place until you are legally discharged therefrom?
Aye. Thank you, everyone. The next order of business is to elect, the first order of business, to elect a town council vice president. So nominations for a town, uh, vice president now in order, and I would like to nominate Thomas P. Walsh III. Uh, are there any other nominations? The name of Thomas P. Walsh III has replaced the nomination. There being no further nominations, the motion to close nominations is in order.
Motion to close nominations.
Uh, motion has been moved and seconded to close nomination. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Nomination of Thomas P. Walsh as the place, uh, has been nominated for vice president. Uh, motion to appoint Thomas P. Walsh III as vice president.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Those anybody opposed? Motion carries.
Do you, Thomas P. Walsh, solemnly swear that you will be true and faithful unto the Town of Middletown and support the charter and ordinances thereof unto the State of Rhode Island and support the laws and Constitution thereof and the Constitution of the United States? And you will well and truly execute the office of vice president for the term for which you have been appointed until another be engaged in your place or you are legally discharged therefrom?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Aye.
Okay, the second order of business is the election of a town solicitor. Uh, nominations for town solicitor are now in order, and I'd probably nominate Peter B. Reagan. The name of Peter B. Reagan has replaced the nominations. Are there any other nominations? There being no further nominations, the motion to close nominations is in order.
Move to close nominations.
She's fast. It has been moved and seconded to close nominations. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Peter B. Reagan, Peter B. Reagan has been nominated as town solicitor. The motion to appoint Peter B. Reagan as town solicitor. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, Peter.
Do you, Peter B. Reagan, solemnly swear that you will be true and faithful unto the Town of Middletown and the State, the charter and ordinances thereof unto the State of Rhode Island and support the laws and Constitution thereof and the Constitution of the United States? And you will well and truly execute the office of town solicitor for the term for which you have been appointed until another be engaged in your place and you are legally discharged therefrom?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Okay, the third order of business is election of assistant town solicitors. Uh, nominations for assistant town solicitors are now in order.
I would like to nominate Christopher J. McAllie and Michael E. Monti.
Names of Christopher J. McAllie and Michael E. Monti have replaced the nomination as assistant town solicitors. Are there any other nominations? There being no further nominations, the motion to close nominations is in order.
Second.
Motion to close nominations.
It has been moved and seconded to close nomination. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Christopher J. McAllie and Michael E. Monti have replaced the nomination as assistant town solicitors.
Motion to appoint Christopher J. McAllie and Michael E. Monti as assistant solicitors.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, when you did it here this evening, right?
So I was squared in and in and out of it.
Excellent, thank you. Peter, congratulations to the unity staff.
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Okay. The fourth order of business is election of assistant town solicitor for prosecution matters. Uh, nominations for assistant town solicitor for prosecution matters are now in order. Uh, I would probably nominate Anthony Bussari. The name of Anthony Bussari has replaced the nomination as assistant town solicitor for prosecution matters. Are there any other nominations? There being no further nominations, the motion to close nominations is in order.
Move to close nominations.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to close nominations. Uh, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Anthony Bussari has been nominated as assistant town solicitor for prosecution matters. Motion to appoint Anthony Bussari as assistant town solicitor for prosecution matters. There's a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Okay, the fifth order of business, congratulations. Fifth order of business is election of probate judge. Nominations for probate judge are now in order.
I'd like to nominate Michael W. Miller.
The name of Michael W. Miller has replaced the nominations. Are there any other nominations? There being no further nominations, the motion to close nominations is now in order.
Move to close nominations.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to close nominations. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Michael W. Miller has been nominated as probate judge.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Michael W. Miller as probate judge.
The motion is second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Ready. Uh, the sixth order of business is election of assistant probate judge. Nominations for assistant probate judge are now in order.
I'd like to nominate Barbara A. Farrell.
The name of Barbara A. Farrell has replaced the nomination. Are there any further nominations? There being no further nominations, the motion to close nominations is now in order.
Move to close nominations.
It has been moved and seconded to close nominations. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The motion carries. Barbara A. Farrell has been nominated as assistant probate judge.
Motion to appoint Barbara A. Farrell as assistant probate judge.
The motion is second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, Barbara. Congratulations, Barbara. Barbara Sattler is on the council for years also. Uh, two years back. Seventh order of business is the election of municipal court judge. Nominations for municipal court judge are now in order.
Francis S. Holbrook.
The name of Francis S. Holbrook has replaced the nominations. Are there any further nominations? There being no further nominations, the motion to close nominations is in order.
Move to close nominations.
Second.
The motion is seconded. It has been moved and seconded to close nominations. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Francis S. Holbrook II has been nominated as municipal court judge.
Motion to appoint Francis S. Holbrook II as municipal court judge.
Yep. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, Francis. Fifty-eighth order of business is election of the first assistant, uh, a first assistant municipal court judge. Nominations for the first assistant municipal court judge are now in order.
Election nominated Robert M. Silva.
The name of Robert M. Silva has been placed in nominations, are there any other nominations? There be no further nominations, a motion to close nominations is in order.
Move to close nominations.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded and closed nominations, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, motion carries. Robert M. Silva has been nominated as first assistant municipal court judge.
Motion to appoint Robert M. Silva as first assistant municipal court judge.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, motion carries.
He's not here this evening, so I'll swear him in another time.
Excellent, thank you, Wendy. The ninth order of business this evening is the election of the second assistant municipal court judge. Nominations for a second municipal, uh, second assistant municipal court judge are now in order.
I'd like to nominate Kevin O'Hagan.
The name of Kevin O'Hagan has been placed in nominations, are there any other nominations? There be no further nominations, a motion to close nominations is in order.
Move to close nominations.
Second.
Uh, it has been moved and seconded and closed nominations, those in favor, uh, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Kevin O'Hagan has been nominated as second assistant municipal court judge.
Motion to appoint Kevin O'Hagan as second assistant municipal court judge.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Congratulations, Kevin.
Do you, Kevin O'Hagan, solemnly swear that you will be faithful unto the town of Midtown, and support the charter and ordinance as thereof, on to the State of Rhode Island, and support the laws and constitution thereof, and the Constitution of the United States, and you will well and truly execute the office of Assistant Municipal Court Judge by the term for which you have been appointed, until another being made to your place, and you are legally discharged there.
I do.
Okay, we are going to move on to some presentations. Uh, the time now, put down to the floor, and I'll make a few remarks and make some, uh, uh. Okay, uh, we would first like to recognize the board of canvases, so you can come forward or we can come to you, however you want to do it. Uh, we'd like to recognize the board of canvases, Lucy Dionne, Mrs. Murphy, and Adeline Rose, or Mrs. Rose, uh, for all their hustle and hard work in executing a successful election. These women work extremely hard and extremely dedicated, um, and simply put, they can look easy and flawless, so we thank you for that, um, we'll, we'll make it at, uh, the elec, every election that you work on, easy and flawless, so thanks for all your hard work. I'd like to just take a minute to thank Wendy and Karen also, because they've worked extremely hard. For those of you that don't know, the town clerk and the deputy town clerk really love the town. So, having said that, that's it, somebody has to do it, you're right. Thank you, sir. Um, the, uh, the next, uh, we'd like to recognize Governor McKee, you want to come down with us, please?
I can.
That'd be great.
Governor, uh, we recognize you for taking the time to join us this evening, it's a privilege and an honor for you to take the time out of your busy schedule to come down and swear us all in. Um, in the bag is actually, so thank you for that, we appreciate it. In the bag is a town tile, it's actually a town clock, and it's also a penset, it says the town of Middletown, so every time you're working hard at your desk, you can look up and you can remember us. We very, very appreciate it, Wendy, we thank you. Thank you, Governor. Is Bill here?
No, Kyle's over there.
Okay, okay. Um, we'd now like to recognize Deborah Jarrow. Deb, you, um, most you know Deb has been a state rep for fourteen years, um, she ran for lieutenant governor, um, she was unfavorable for her, but, you know, when one door closes, another door opens, so we'd certainly like to recognize you, Deb, for fourteen years of serving Jamestown and Middletown, and really everyone in the state of Rhode Island, so, uh, you've worked, uh, Deb, you've worked tirelessly for us, we're grateful for your hard work and dedication, and for making Middletown a better place to live.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, I just want to say thank you so very much for the honor and the privilege of serving as your state rep for the last fourteen years. It was a joyous journey, we did some remarkable work, and, uh, you'll always be in my heart, so, uh, Godspeed, thank you.
And Deb, we wish you the best of luck in all your future endeavors. Okay, Terry Flynn, we welcome two new councils, but we're saying bye to two, two former councils, so Terry, if you could join us, please? We say goodbye, goodbye to Council Flynn, who served on our town for the past four years. Your thoroughness and willingness to tackle any issue regardless of its toughness or easiness, um, will be sorely missed. We thank you for your hard work, dedication, and contributions to making this a better town. Uh, we are grateful for having you on the council with us. Thank you, Terry, we appreciate it. And, uh, we have a nice picture in here that was done, I believe, by, by, uh, probate judge, he does, uh, pictures on the side, it's actually the one you presented to the town, we're giving it back to you. No, I'm just kidding. Thank you, Terry, we appreciate it. Bottom line goes. You're not getting away with that. Nice try. Okay, so we also say goodbye to Barbara Von Villas. Barbara served the past fourteen years consecutively. Yeah. Your steady guidance, voice of reason, and your extreme passion for educational improvements was always present. Your ability to keep discussions on track on all issues and in perspective will be missed. I will always hold a special place in my heart for you as my high school homeroom and English teacher, as well as my fellow council for the past ten years. You have been a lifetime educator as a teacher and also as a town council. For that, we thank you and are forever grateful for the countless hours spent over the past fourteen years making Middletown a better place for all. Thank you. Okay. Okay, um, we also have, I think I lost the page, oh, no idea. So, I'd also like to recognize, as we welcome two new school committee members, uh, two school committee members, um, are no longer with us, they're with us, but they're not no longer school members. My, my mind was processing, and as I was saying it, I said, that's coming out wrong.
Leanna Fenton, uh, Fer- Ferreira Fenton, she's not here this evening, but I'd still like to say a few words about her. Um, Leanna, 'cause it's, it's, it's impressive. Leanna served from nineteen ninety-eight to twenty-twenty-two consecutively. Twenty-four consecutive years of commitment, dedication, and countless hours to help improve the quality of education for every Middletown student, especially the robotics, 'cause that was her thing that she loved. Um, we thank you for that, Leanna. We wish you the best in your future endeavors. And we have something that, uh, Wendy will certainly present to her, and I hope I get to see her. If not, I'll call her. If not, please pass that along, okay? Uh, Doug Arnold, come on up, Mr. Arnold. Mr. Arnold, my eighth grade math teacher. With a few prods.
He majored in Texas.
That's it. Doug Arnold, Doug Arnold served from two thousand fourteen to two thousand, uh, twenty-two. In the past few years, he served as the vice chair of the school committee. We thank you for both your dedicated public service, um, as a teacher and as a school committee member and contributions to improving educational opportunities for all our children. We wish you the best in your future endeavors. Deb is Doug. Thank you very, I hate to call you Doug. It's always been Mr. Arnold. Thank you, Mr. Arnold. I appreciate it.
So unfortunately, Lee could not be here, but as Paul said, she's served twenty-four years. She's also been an integral part of the, uh, Rhode Island School Association, and she's been on that board for over twenty years. So she's been a really important part of bringing a lot of, um, issues to the state and, and working with our legislators to be able to, um, support our students across the state, not just in Middletown. But it's been a real asset for us to have her as a Middletown school committee member, being able to bring so much back to our local town. And for Mr. Arnold, Doug, I would like to, you'd come up here for us. Doug has been with us, as, as Paul said, for eight years. It's been a true pleasure working with him. Uh, with him being an educator, it was a real asset to bring his skill set and his knowledge to the school board and be able to utilize that to enhance and work really hard for our students to provide them, uh, high-quality education. So we have a little gift for you. I was gonna save it for Thursday's meeting, but I feel this is a great forum to give you. Thank you very much, Doug.
Thank you very much.
So thank you to both of you.
I love to watch democracy in action. It may get a little loud sometimes, but it's a good thing. And when you're on a school committee, you only need to know one thing: Vote for what is best for the kids.
Thank you, Phoebe. Uh, I'd just like to welcome everybody and thank you for being here tonight. Very special welcome and a big thanking to our Governor Dan McKee, uh, for taking the time. Governor, already busy scheduling to swear us all in. It's an honor and a privilege to have you here with us this evening. Uh, I'd also like to recognize other distinct sketches. We have Senator Lou DiPaolo sitting in the front row here. Again, Representative Deborah Jarrow. And I'd like to introduce, for those of you that don't know him, um, new representative elect, Alex Finkelman, who is taking the extra position. Thank you to the Middletown Police and Fire Department, Stollagod. You guys look very sharp tonight and job well done. Thank you, Phoebe. Thank you to the Middletown High School Chorus for singing our national anthem. Great job. Impressive. Very well done. Thank you to Reverend Father Thomas O'Neill for the invocation and soon to be made addition. We appreciate you being here, and Father's also on our open space and fields committee, for those of you that don't know that. So excellent job. I want to thank my fellow councils for your confidence in me, uh, to be a council president. I'd like to take a moment to welcome two new council members and again, say goodbye to two former council members. The absence of Terry Flynn and Barbara Von Villas, there's some issues to fill. Uh, we welcome new councils Emily Desia and Steve Tyler. Who we are excited to work with. Peter is no stranger to the public service. Peter brings, uh, lifetime of public service and a wealth of government knowledge. He served as Newport's fire chief, and he's also served as City Newport's interim city manager for a time. Um, Emily, Emily's a lifelong Middletown resident, who brings youth, fresh perspectives, and an abundance of welcome energy to the town houses. And when I say energy, I mean a lot of energy. And I say that because, and just bear with me, Emily. Um, anyone that can run over a hundred miles in a weekend has a lot of energy to burn, and Emily has achieved that. This past term was transitioned and likely we came together as a team. We're able to move some major initiatives closer to completion. The road to addressing the needs of our schools has proven difficult on several fronts, but we remain committed to moving educational opportunities for our children, teachers, and residents forward. We will regroup, explore every option, and bring forth the best plan of action available for our children and our taxpayers. We also have several affordable housing initiatives in motion to help our seniors, young families, and our workforce residents get the housing they need and deserve. The balance of affordability and quality of life will always be a top priority to our residents who enjoy the beauty of our great town and the ability to remain in their homes. How do we achieve that? Teamwork. Teamwork is the key to moving our town forward. We can accomplish all these initiatives when we all work together as one in the same direction. But however, we must pull the rope, all pull the rope from the same end. The old saying, "You want to be successful, you surround yourself with successful people," right? We are surrounded with great administration led by, led by our town administrator, Sean Brown, and his great team of department heads and their great teams. We have several hundred years of experience with our town solicitors, Peter Regan and his team of assistant solicitors, Christopher McNally, Michael Monte, municipal court judge, Judge is Frank Holbrook, uh, Assistant Municipal Court Judge Bob Silver, and Kevin O'Hagan. Probate Court Judge Michael Miller, for those who don't know, this term will complete thirty years as a probate judge. Assistant Probate Judge and former council Barbara A. Farrell. Barbara A. Farrell. Assistant Solicitor for Prosecution is our former police chief Anthony Bissari. I say this from the bottom of my heart, I mean it. We are fortunate and grateful to have you all on this team. We need to work closely with our school committee and our school department, uh, to develop a strong cohesive relationship. Again, we welcome two new school committee members, Wendy Heaney and Greg Hewitt, and we're looking forward to working with all of you. We also say goodbye to two tenured school committee members, Leanna Fenton, and of course, as said earlier, my eighth grade student, Anthony Jip Gordon. We are here to serve the people of Middletown with the best of our ability. We promise you two things. First, that we'll work very hard for you, and second, that we'll be extremely passionate about protecting your tax-paid dollars. We are committed to seeing that the town uses its resources very, very carefully to ensure that Middletown remains a vibrant and great place to live now and in the distant future. We cannot predict the future, right? Certainly not, but we can predict that we'll work together to position this great town to weather any difficult times or issues that may arise. However, we need to remember in order to do that, that we are one team united, and we need to make the name one team united, no matter what comes between us. You have placed great trust and responsibility in us, that we'll always be honored and you respect, respected. We will remain grateful and humble, as the father stated early, I totally stole a line from my speech. Uh, and humble for the opportunity to work with you and for you, and we look forward to the work ahead. Thank you.
May God bless you in your deliberations, in your at times very long meetings, and in the decisions you make. May God bless all who assist you, all who brief you, and all who advise you. May God bless the people you appoint to committees and boards. Bless all who strive to make this town livable, functional, cooperative, and inclusive. Bless God in a special way in our present time particularly. Bless and protect our election officials and workers in this town and everywhere else so essential to democracy. Lord, keep them safe and whole in all that they do. Amen.
There is, um, just before we close it out, there is one more, um, one more person that's not here this evening that I'd like to recognize. Uh, Governor Bill Corson, uh, was a state tru- a state trooper. Every time I've seen the governor, been in the governor's company, Bill is, um, Bill tries to help where Governor around and make sure he's safe. He gets there on time. I wanted to recognize Bill because Bill, not only a, not only a state trooper, he's also a former Middletown police officer, um, that took the lead to the state trooper. So, we have a clock, and as I said, we have a clock and a clock tower, but Bill, I want to make sure, I was hoping he was here tonight, but, uh, he's not. But I want to make sure that we pass that on.
Oh, we appreciate that. He was well-trained here, by the way.
Yeah, we just want to say his thanks for keeping you safe, for the residents of Middletown, and the people safe around us as he continues to serve. So thank you. Uh, we are having refreshments and some finger food tonight, so we all invite you to join us today. Also, New York, that's a free thing.